Well, hello everyone. My name is Renee Hopkins and I'm the CEO of the Alliance for Gun Responsibility. Thank you all so much for joining us this afternoon for our second Seattle Candidate Forum on Gun Violence this year. I want to start by acknowledging that here in Seattle, where we are streaming from, we are on the traditional land of the Coast Salish people, specifically the Duwamish people, past and present. We extend honor and gratitude to the land itself and to the Duwamish tribe. If you would like to learn more about land acknowledgements or what native land you might live or work on, we encourage you to visit the link included in the chat. We are really looking forward to hearing today from three candidates seeking the citywide position nine on Seattle City Council. And we know we're not the only ones. More than 150 people have RSVP to join us here on Zoom, and I know others are watching live on Facebook as well. Before we get going, I have a few brief housekeeping notes. Please stay muted during the duration of the forum so that we can be sure there are no distractions, but feel free to keep your cameras on if you feel comfortable. The best way to view this event is in speaker mode. You can get there by clicking on the little button that says "View" in the upper right corner of your screen and selecting "Speaker." That will make sure you can see all the right people and the timer at the same time. If you'd like to see or share a recording of this event afterwards, you will be able to find it on the Alliance for Gun Responsibilities Facebook page. We will also be streaming this program again on Facebook at 7:00 PM tonight. We are proud to be hosting today's event in partnership with our friends, Grandmothers Against Gun Violence, and we are extremely grateful to our media sponsor, the South Seattle Emerald. I also want to thank each of the candidates joining us today. We appreciate you taking the gun violence epidemic seriously and the time to be here today. Every new day brings another reminder of the urgency of the gun violence crisis, a crisis that impacts all of our communities in one way or another. In Washington State, more than 800 people are killed by guns every year. Three-quarters of those deaths are suicide, 20% are homicide, many are domestic violence-related, and 3% are officer-involved. We know that, like the pandemic, the gun violence epidemic falls hardest on Black and Brown communities. We also know that gun violence was only made worse by the economic hardship and social disruption caused by the pandemic. And in 2020, Seattle saw the highest number of homicides in more than 25 years, driven in part by growing gun violence, and so far, 2021 is on track to be just as deadly. More than a year after historic protests calling to dismantle white supremacy and the end of police violence, voters are eager to see more than just statements from local leaders. Because we know that this crisis is not inevitable, there are steps we can and must take to prevent gun violence before it's too late. Local leaders have a huge role to play in the fight against gun violence. Our cities and counties are really where the rubber meets the road, where so much of the work to create safer communities can and should be done. Two weeks ago, many of you joined us for another Forum on Gun Violence, where we heard from some leading Seattle mayoral candidates. And that discussion highlighted just how much city leaders can do to prevent gun violence in all its forms. City council members are key players in the implementation of existing laws, overseeing law enforcement, funding community-based violence prevention intervention programs, and advocating for statewide progress and more. With all of that in mind, we want to kick off today's event with a quick poll to get a sense of our audience's priorities. If you don't already, you should see a screen pop up with this question. "The Seattle City Council must tackle gun violence in all its forms. Which of the following should be prioritized for the council's public health approach to gun violence prevention?" And please choose your top three. Your individual results will be anonymous, but we will share the general results in just a minute. Again, to select just your top three, you have a little bit more time to answer. Okay. And... Steph, do you want to tell us what the top three are?
Sure, it looks like overwhelmingly 62% of folks chose addressing the root causes of gun violence, as an example, poverty. 49% of folks responding chose investing in community violence interruption programs. And 43% of folks chose providing mental health support for people in crisis. So those were the top three.
Thank you so much, Steph, and thank you all for voting. It's really clear our elected leaders have their work cut out for them, and we're looking forward to learning more about the priorities of the candidates with us today. We've got a lot of material to cover in this next hour, so let's get to it. I'm really pleased to introduce our moderator, Marcus Harrison Green. Marcus is a publisher of the South Seattle Emerald, columnist with the Seattle Times, and lifelong Seattleite. Growing up in the South Seattle, he saw firsthand the impact of one-dimensional storytelling on marginalized communities and learned the value of authentic, diverse narratives. After a stint in the investment world, he returned to South Seattle to tell stories with nuance and complexity with the hope of advancing social change. Since its founding, the South Seattle Emerald has become a vital part of the city, bringing attention to stories and communities that had long gone uncovered. He was awarded the Seattle Human Rights Commission's Individual Human Rights Leader Award for 2020, and we are really honored to have him with us today. Marcus, it's all yours.
Thank you very much for that introduction, Renee. It's such a pleasure to be here. I'm just glad to have this opportunity to dig into issues of gun violence and public safety. As I shared at the mayoral forum a couple of weeks ago, gun violence is a critical issue for me personally. I've lost friends and loved ones to gun violence, and my South Seattle community currently has one of the highest rates of gun violence in the city and has also recently been touched by bouts of gun violence, unfortunately. So today's forum is critical in terms of the future of our city. Now, I am glad to be joined by a three terrific trio of terrific candidates here. And each of these candidates, I know, thinks that we can do more to prevent gun violence in all its forms and keep Seattleites safe. Our goal today is to find out what exactly they would do to create the safer, more just, and more equitable future we're all looking for. I know I certainly am. So thank you to everybody who is watching via Zoom, or even if you're watching the restream at 7:00 PM, I'll give you a shout out as well. I appreciate everybody who has submitted questions for our trio candidates today, and we are definitely looking forward to digging deep into this issue. So as Renee mentioned, we do have a lot of ground to cover, and we only have an hour to do so. So let me lay out the format for you today. We're going to start with a round of introductions and opening statements from each candidate. We'll then do a flash round. Well, I will ask a series of quick, but not too quick, questions that each candidate will respond to with either a thumbs up in agreement or a thumbs down in disagreement. I hope that all the candidates have their paddles ready. They appear to. After that, we will get into individual questions sourced from community members and follow-ups. And finally, assuming that we have stuck to the time, we will have closing statements from each candidate. Now, we will have a timer for each section, and I will certainly not be shy about cutting anyone off, although I will definitely want to be respectful to all of the candidates and allow them to give us thorough of an answer as they possibly can, as there will be some very complex questions, because this is a very complex issue. But now, without further ado, let's go ahead and get into the opening statements. Now, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves and answer this question. Each of you would be a first-time elected candidate, which means voters have not had the opportunity to see how you could govern. With that in mind, please tell us which local elected official best represents how you would govern and why that would be your governing style. We will start alphabetically by last name to begin. So Sarah, virtue of your name, beginning with an "N", and everyone else either beginning with an "O" or a "T", you are up first, and you have three minutes.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you very much for convening this forum. So just some background on me. I am a progressive small-business owner, and I'm running for Seattle City Council, because I think the council's lost its way, and I'll bring pragmatic and experienced leadership. I worked for about maybe 10 years for council member Richard Conlin when, back, I don't know, about 15 years ago, and I learned how good policy is made by listening to people, incorporating input, and paying attention to detail. And my husband and I own Fremont Brewing since 2009, and we managed not to lay anybody off during the pandemic, kept folks employed. And, you know, people are struggling now, but hopefully, small businesses that made it through will be fortunate to go on, and economic recovery is one of my main focuses. Now, I want to just stop my stump speech right now. I could go on and on and on about my three points, etc., but you did ask about my local leader, and that person is Richard Conlin. I worked closely with him. You didn't say if he would have to be in office right now. But what I learned from Richard is that is the importance of leading with a set of core values and then evaluating one's decision and all the inputs based on that, and that requires attention to minutia, talking to stakeholders, and giving the public time to provide their input, and that's the way that you avoid unintended consequences. So when I'm thinking about leadership and the style that I want to emulate if I'm elected, it's that kind of leader: careful, deliberate, open, and transparent. So I do have some more time, so I do want to get back to basically saying that I am running not just to help small businesses, although I think it's important, because economic insecurity, disempowerment, and alienation is a huge root cause of gun violence of any kind. So hopefully, we'll have a chance to talk to that more later. But I'm also focused on getting back to basic services: parks, libraries, transportation, fire. These are things that touch people's lives every day. And then finally, it's accountability. And we've come through tough times, but I believe that, you know, we've got an opportunity here for a major political reset in this town, and it starts by electing candidates who not just share the values that everyone probably watching has, but who's pragmatic and experienced enough to put in place effective solutions to move the needle on some of our problems.
Thank you very much, Sarah. All right, Nikita, the floor is now yours for your opening statement, and the elected official you admire, which I guess can be past, present, and future. So go ahead.
Awesome. Yeah, so my name is Nikita Oliver. I use them pronouns. I am currently the Executive Director of Creative Justice, an arts-based, human-engaged organization for young people that started out as a diversion program here in King County. And the elected leader is Councilmember Girma Zahalai, who has also endorsed our campaign. And the reasons why are Councilmember Zahalai is community-connected, shows up as president, community is accountable and transparent. I see him fighting hard daily for solutions that address root causes, is attacking systemic and institutional issues like racism, classism, sexism, and many inequities that contribute to the racial wealth gap, the lack of access to affordable housing, and the material conditions in communities like the Rayner Beach neighborhood, where we both live in the South End, contribute to why we are seeing upticks in gun violence and why we see gun violence perpetuated in that community. Also, we share a few things in common in terms of our lived experience. We're Black. We are both attorneys, and we prioritize working alongside young folks in our communities. I love that Girma is willing to make hard decisions, even though those decisions are sometimes unpopular. He and his campaign stood with the No New Youth Jail campaign and talked about the problems of investing millions of dollars in a new carceral structure rather than millions of dollars and the things that we know keep young people out of the school-to-prison pipeline. He's authentic, accountable, transparent, and we're working together on a beautiful project called the Youth Achievement Center, which is housing co-located with services for young people in the South End of Seattle, acknowledging that if we want to end violence, then we have to address root causes. And one of those root causes is a lack of access to affordable housing and the supportive services that address the things that are happening underneath the surface. I am thrilled that the top three things that folks spoke to were addressing root causes, invest in interruption programs, and mental health supports. These are the top three things that you will find on our website when we talk about our platform. We don't have a specific area talking about gun violence, because what we want to do is get to addressing those root causes, meeting basic needs, and investing in violence interruption programs like the one I work for now called Creative Justice, Community Passageways, Choose180, Rayner Beach Action Coalition. And I'm honored to be endorsed by community leaders like Coach Don Davis and Sean Good because of my track record in violence interruption and violence prevention work.
Thank you very much, Nikita. Brianna, the floor is yours. You have three minutes.
Great. I know that we are running short on time, so I am going to try to keep it to two, so we can use that extra minute for your questions. Hello, my name is Brianna Thomas. I hope to be your candidate for Seattle City Council Position Nine, and I am running from a place of a true call to public service. I am a fourth-generation military kid. I've got teachers and pastors and nurses and doctors and singers, oh my, in my family, and that is what we do. We are people, people, and we show up when things are difficult, and we make sure to center our community and bring voices with us to actual actions. I have been working in and around the city of Seattle for about 11 years now. Some of my greatest hits, if you will, were the C-TAC $15 minimum wage, the first in the nation, which we won by 77 votes. So if anyone ever says one vote doesn't matter, coin met C-TAC. I ran in 2015 for the West Seattle District position, and when I lost that, I picked myself up and went right back to working on honest elections, which has really democratized how public financing in our campaigns here in the city of Seattle creates an even playing field for working folks like myself and for Nikita to have an opportunity to run a well-funded campaign. In 2018, I worked on gun-safe storage with the city of Seattle. In terms of who I see myself most like as another elected official, I'm going to go with Rebecca Saldana. She gets work done in a very sometimes divided, very contentious environment down in Olympia for all of us, and I'm super proud to have her endorsement. You know, Rebecca works in the Senate, and we just recently took the lead there, but when they weren't in control, she was having the difficult conversations across the aisle and leading her caucus to tangible results and policy wins that we all feel in our communities every day. I hope to answer some questions about myself and my policies in this forum, but one thing I'd love to leave you with at the opener is I am running from a place of 11 years of experience inside government institutions, making real policy happen, getting it passed, making sure it stands up to legal challenges. And then we're talking about what you need in an effective leader on the council right now, somebody that's a bridge builder, that can get things done and has a proven track record, I think is what our city is clamoring for.
Thank you very much, Brianna, and keep it nearly under two minutes, too. Well, we are going to move on to our flash round. Now, there will be no timer for this round. I am going to run through a series of quick-ish questions that can be answered with either a thumbs up in agreement or a thumbs down in disagreement. Now, candidates, do all of you have your paddles? Okay, okay. Cool. Well, I will start here with the first question. Forty thousand Americans are killed by gun violence every year, and twice as many are injured. Suicide, domestic violence, interpersonal violence, police violence, unintentional shootings, and mass shootings are all forms of gun violence. Here's the question. Do you believe that all gun violence is preventable? All right. Thank you for that. We all know that the causes and solutions to gun violence are varied and complex, but the Alliance and Grandmothers do believe that with a true public health approach, we can prevent gun violence in all its forms. Now, moving on to question two. And this is going to be, actually, these next few questions are going to be a series of true and false questions for you all. So give a thumbs up for true and a thumbs down for false. If you were paying attention to Renee's preamble, you might actually get some of the answers here. So anyhow, true or false? Suicide accounts for a greater percentage of gun deaths in Washington State than it does nationally? And you all have done your homework. That is true. Suicide, unfortunately, accounts for more than 75% of all gun deaths in Washington State. Nationally, that number is only 60%. I shouldn't say only, but it's 60%. Question number three. True or false? Firearms are the leading cause of death for children and young people in Washington State? That is also unfortunately true, both in our state and nationally. And tragically, recently released data shows that the number of murder victims who were children or teens soared in Washington State to 37 last year, up from 21 in 2019. Next question. The cost of the human lives lost due to gun violence is immeasurable, but researchers have calculated the economic toll gun violence takes on our communities in the form of medical expenses, loss of income, incarceration, and more. Do you think the average cost of gun violence per Washington State resident is more than, and if you believe it's more than, that'll be a thumbs up, or less than? And if you believe it's less than, it'd be a thumbs down. So do you believe that it is more than or less than $500 per year? That's also correct. The economic cost of gun violence per Washington State resident is $716 every year. I see all of you have done your homework, so this is great. The first weekend, next question, the first weekend in June is a time of gun, as a time the gun violence prevention movement honors victims of gun violence and tries to build awareness by wearing orange. Did you participate in Wear Orange by attending an event, posting on social media, and are wearing orange that weekend? All right. Well, thank you to, for those who did participate. Question, then, our next question here is on June 7th, the Alliance hosted a candidate training to inform candidates on the gun violence crisis in Washington and the opportunities local candidates have to be a part of the solution. Thumbs up if you attended the training, and thumbs down if you did not. All right. Thank you for coming, Nikita.
Well, I want to provide a stipulation. It was during the day, and multiple members from my team did attend, and then we did a debrief session, so I want to make sure I'm honest about that.
Okay, okay. Appreciate the context as well. Next question. Washington State's preemption law prevents local elected officials from passing some gun safety policies. Will you do everything in your power to dismantle this law so that you can create policies specific to our city to help keep Seattle residents safe? All right, everybody, thumbs up on that one. And we do know that even with preemption, local leaders have significant roles to play in keeping our communities safe, like ensuring effective implementation of existing gun laws, especially as they relate to community-based organizations, the police force, and our schools. Next question. This year, the legislature passed a package of laws designed to hold police accountable, but there is still so much work to be done. Will you work to ensure the implementation of all of the police accountability, all of the police accountability laws that passed in Olympia this year are actually implemented? All right. Thank you for that. Next question. The pandemic not only disproportionately impacted Black and Brown communities in our city, but it also exacerbated the structural circumstances that allow city gun violence to thrive. So much so, that 2020 recorded the highest number of gun deaths in at least 50 years. As a Seattle City Council member, will you commit to dedicating significant portions of Seattle's Federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars to funding comprehensive city gun violence reduction plans? All right.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure we're including upstream solutions, right?
Yes.
Just to make sure I answered the question. Yes.
Okay. And just a factoid, the Treasury Department has issued guidance specifically permitting the use of those American rescue funds to evidence-based community violence intervention programs. So, all right. Question, the next question here is, community-based violence interruption programs are key to preventing gun violence. Would you prioritize funding and expanding these local programs? All right. A yes from everybody on that. And just a shout out, as we do know that we do have some great programs here in the city, including Choose180 and Community Passageways. Shout out to Sean Good and Don Davis, as well as all of the folks who work alongside them at those organizations. All right, next question. Extreme risk protection orders are one of the best civil tools, not criminal law, we have for preventing people in a mental health crisis from harming themselves or others. Will you commit to launching a citywide public education campaign on this underutilized tool? All right. So a yes from everybody, and I have to say, I have to show my bias here and say I appreciate that as somebody who does live with a mental health condition. So thank you to you all. Next question. We all agree children deserve to attend schools free from the fear of gun violence. Some argue that arming school resource officers is the best way to prevent school shootings. Do you support armed school resource officers in our schools? All right, that's a no from everybody. And, I mean, we do know, right, if guns made a safer America, it would be the safest country in the world. There is currently no evidence that armed school employees prevent violence or keep schools safe. All right, and the last question on our flash round here. You are all here because gun violence prevention is a major part of your platform, so we can assume you've made that clear on your campaign website. Can we get a thumbs up if folks can access a gun violence issue area on your website right now? All right. Well, hopefully, that'll take place, I suppose. All right, well, thank you all for participating in the flash round. We are going to now move on to our tough questions section. That is literally what it is called. So in this section, we are going to have community voices who will actually ask all the candidates their specific question, and each candidate will be given three minutes to respond to a community member. So I want to first up call on Jeannie Shu. Jeannie, could you please unmute yourself and ask your first question?
Thank you, Mr. Green. My name is Jeannie Shu. I am a volunteer with several violence prevention organizations, including Grandmothers Against Gun Violence and the Alliance. My question is for Sarah. You do not currently have a plan on your website to address the rising rates of gun violence in our city. What specific ideas do you have to reduce community violence and homicide in the city? Please be specific.
Thank you for that. There is now a section. So first, what I have to say is that council needs to step up, speak out, show some heart, and meet with families who have lost loved ones to gun violence, and have the courage to lead on this. I don't see that happening. That's something that I hear a lot, particularly when I talk to people in the Black community, that there is a deafening silence on the part of city council. You know, I think that this is more important than, you know, the officers that went to DC, etc. So there were several shootings over the weekend. My point is that my approach on city council will be to to support and invest more in the programs that are already working, that have proven, community-based programs to proven community based programs to uh, to end the school to prison pipeline, to divert people from the criminal justice system, to reintegrate people that have been in the system and to to support victims and their families and their broader community. So so there, so there are so anyway, support what works and many of the people here are part of those organizations and invest new and and more dollars in other programs. I was surprised to see that that domestic violence was so such a low priority because domestic gender based violence, violence in the home um, is a big uh, you know, is a big driver of the increased numbers of of gun violence. And uh, so one of my priorities will be to support survivor driven financial assistance that's flexible so that people who are at risk of experiencing gender based violence can exit their dangerous situation before law enforcement is uh, is involved. And another thing is to um, get firearms out of homes. This was mentioned already today, and there is research that that Grandmothers Against Gun Violence is doing right now to uh, to establish that it's effective to remove firearms from homes. And so that that will lend support for for me on council or other local jurisdictions to actually support that and and then also educate people about this tool. The of getting guns out of the hands of people that are at risk of harming themselves or others. So those are some of the policy positions that I will take. I already mentioned um, getting at the root causes. So I have a whole platform on economic support and and building people back in retaining and getting new jobs. So I'm not going to talk about that root cause much today, but know that it's available for you to see. But my point is that um, that gun violence is is rising and requires a much more robust response. And you can read about it on my website.
All right, thank you, Sarah. I did just have a quick follow up for you. You talked about the need to get you know, guns out of the homes and so forth of some people. How I mean, how would you, what would your approach be to to actually do that? I know that there have, you know, been several folks who have tried to do that in the past around, you know, multiple municipalities. How would you?
I think it, yeah, I think it does begin at least getting firearms out of the house. That does require investigatory resources. And so um, so that will require some support to actually do the work because last thing we want to do is is trample on folks' second amendment right, of course. And so the this has to be you know, we need people that will actually be dedicated to uh, supporting that effort.
Thank you, Sarah. And now I'm going to ask Maria Solano or Roz to share her question. Maria, could you please unmute and take it away and ask your question to Brianna?
Yeah, thank you, Marcus. Uh, my name is Maria. I am an undergraduate student at the University of Washington, a human rights advocate. My question is for Brianna. You served as a legislative aide and senior advisor on public safety to current council president. What would you have done differently than your boss? As it relates to public safety and police accountability in general and on police accountability, specifically as it relates to the two thousand seventeen police contract which was completed but while you were on staff?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Maria. Also, go dogs. So a couple of things that I think I want to open with that we have done well at the city in the time that I've been there. We have invested resources in our regional domestic violence firearms enforcement unit. It's a coalition that works between the city and the county to actually get guns out of homes. And they've been successful to the tune of over, I think, twenty four hundred weapons since twenty eighteen. I helped draft that budget investment sheet. The other thing I want to mention is the work that we're doing around trace data at the city. So making sure that we know how weapons are moving, where they're being used, etc. That's a that's a report that just came out in twenty nineteen, really cutting edge stuff that we're doing here at the city. In terms of what I would do differently, you know, I get this question a lot, and I'm not going to undercut the work that I have been doing with my boss of the last five years. I'm proud of that work. The biggest challenge we had was the twenty eighteen SPA contract where we were dealing with a narrative that you either had to stand for racial justice or you had to stand for workers. Since then, the Martin Luther King County Labor Council has removed SPOG from their membership and is standing in alignment with community around what racial justice and police reform can actually look like. And moving us away from that slippery slope argument that the arbitration and discipline reforms that we're looking for in the twenty seventeen accountability ordinance will get a nose under the tent that would undermine all public sector bargaining. And and I think that we are really making quick progress on realizing that that's not an either or situation. It's a both and we can have both public safety and stand with workers. One of the things I think that's going really well is our new civilian oversight tripartite system for police reform and accountability. You know, just today in the South Seattle Emerald this morning, I was reading a very a well detailed long form piece around uh, some conflicts between the Office of Police Accountability and the Office of Inspector General on some of their findings. We are supposed to have a system that has conflict. We are supposed to have a system that has differing ideas and different ways of looking at the same situation. And the IG is doing exactly what the IG was built to do, which is to keep the Office of Police Accountability accountable. Having that oversight is crucial to making policy reforms that result in actual additional public safety on the ground in our communities. The one big thing that's also glaring for me is our relationship to the consent decree. Last summer, community called for our continued oversight by Judge Robar and the federal government department of justice while tear gas filled the sky. And then the community called for a defunding of the police by fifty percent. We can't give you both. And that's what governing is. It is the art form of trying to be as responsive as quickly as possible to real time community concerns with an eye toward long term solutions and being able to make those trade offs in real time. And that is what I hope to continue to bring to my service to the city of Seattle.
Man, I had a quick follow up since you are such an avid Emerald reader as you you just said. Now, how do we, I know we we've talked about obviously police accountability and and so on and so forth. When it comes to gun violence and and but I wanted to ask you, how do we prioritize the survivors of gun violence when it comes to healing, right? I mean, in in the aftermath of of gun violence, it's, you know, these are things that can obviously stay with somebody's psyche for, you know, years at a time. How, as a city council member, what efforts and approaches do you have in mind to help prioritize those who have survived gun violence and as well as their families?
Yeah, I think. Thank you so much for that question, Marcus. I'm in twenty eighteen. I lost a friend to suicide because we didn't get an ERPO. And we should have. And that has certainly stuck with me. So I think a couple of things we have to demystify the fact that trauma is something that people do experience, and it's healthy to talk about. It is healthy to ask for help. It is healthy to be in community on the backside of it, but we also have to get better at measuring how that trauma ripples out. It's not just the immediate family. It is the entire community that feels that loss that carries that trauma. And for black and brown communities, we are every generation that we've been existing in this country, carrying that trauma from that sort of violence. Public education campaigns about where to get expanded mental health resources are obviously a great place to start, making sure people know what's already out there and how to get connected to it, but making sure that that resource is available in every instance and every neighborhood and isn't a burden on the people already suffering.
Thank you, Brianna. All right, I I'm going to now uh, call on Cherie Rowe Proctor. Cherie, can you please unmute yourself and ask your question to Nikita?
Good afternoon. My name is Cherie Rowe Proctor. And I am a member of the board for Grandmothers Against Gun Violence. I was born and raised in Seattle, and I lived in South Seattle for thirty years. I'm a grandmother of seven. Uh, and four of those grandchildren are African American boys. Nikita, my question for you is a three parter. Given your position on defunding the Seattle Police Department, how would you manage the agency you intend to partially or fully def- the defund? The second part of the question is, what role do you think SPD has in curving gun violence in the Seattle metropolitan area? And then finally, if you are elected, how would you work with law enforcement to make our communities safer?
Yeah, thank you so much for this question. So first of all, managing of Seattle Police Department is actually a role of the executive. The executive is the boss of the chief. The role of city council, we do play a role in the collective bargaining agreement. We play a role in determining budget. We play a role in ordinances that may impact the work of Seattle Police Department. But when it comes to the actual oversight of Seattle Police Department and determining how their job works, how the chief works that administratively and a lot of waste falls under the executive. SPD's role in making safer communities, I think we have to really look deeply at the problem of violence, both systemic violence and also the way in which replicates itself in our communities. And areas like Chicago where they have chosen policing and criminalization as their as one of their primary means of addressing gun violence. We've actually seen gun violence continue to increase because the re- the reality of the problem, if we're really believe that gun violence is a public health crisis, we're going to respond with a public health response. If the water is poisoned and it has something toxic in it, we're going to identify what that toxic thing is, what is increasing the toxicity. And then we're going to remove it, clean the water and make sure those who have become sick from that water receive the care and the healing they need for the not that not to continue to be perpetuated. We have actually failed to respond to the root causes of violence in our city. We know that uh, violence is high in those areas where people are politically disempowered, economically dispossessed, and that is often uh, poor black folks. And when we look at the neighborhoods most impacted by gun violence in Seattle, it is areas like the Rayner Beach Community, South Park and the Central District. My work uh, since I moved to Seattle in in two thousand and four has been rooted in addressing anti violence uh, and doing it at at its roots of acknowledging that the material conditions that people are living in actually perpetuate and precede violent acts. And if Seattle takes the housing affordability crisis seriously, the racial wealth gap, redlining and exclusionary zoning, and understanding that actually correlates with violence, that poverty precedes violence, then we will actually pour more investments into doing the things that we know work, addressing root causes, as you all identified earlier, investing community uh, interruption and mental health supports for people in crisis. I don't think it is necessarily my job to quote unquote, work with law enforcement. My role will be to develop public health strategies that are commensurate with the crisis we are facing. That includes investing in a deep dive program with community passageways and at a level that actually meets their need. Investing in choose one eighty creative justice, collective justice, partnering with the county around restorative community pathways, building affordable housing, addressing the racial wealth gap, and making sure people have access to physical and mental healthcare, having survivor led and survivor centered responses when shootings do occur so that we can stop the likelihood that there will be retaliation. And I'll stop there.
No, thank you so much uh, for that, Nikita. I had a follow up question for you, but you had to add, you had to answer three questions in in one there. So I forgive me that I will not ask, I will not ask you a follow up to for for the sake of time. So I hope you do not feel denied or anything.
I don't. Thank you, Mr. Ree for that uh, three part question.
All right, well, that does it for our tough question section. And and I say that it lived up to the title. We are going to now move on to our community questions. So these are all questions that were also sourced by community members, uh, but I'll be asking them as as opposed to community member. I will ask this directly uh, to each of the candidates. And the candidate will have two minutes to respond. So the first question, uh, we'll actually go to to you, Brianna. This one go is from Lisa. Lisa asked, the US has seen fourteen school shootings since March. If elected, how will you help keep our schools safe from gun violence?
Two minutes, okay. Um, couple of things. One, over the last few years, the relationship between the city of Seattle itself and the school district has been in a real push pull. And I think there's an opportunity to create more meaningful connection between those two separate entities of governance so that we are having meaningful conversations about what our kids need in and outside of schools. I think removing armed officers from schools was a obviously solid first step. We don't need our children feeling like the only way that they can feel safe is with the additional law enforcement looking over them. And interrupting the school to prison pipeline is a huge part of that. We've got to make sure that our schools are indeed places of learning where our children can focus on their education with full bellies and making sure they've got the resources they need in real time to be kids and to grow and to thrive. In terms of what the council can do for school gun safety, I think it's really about public education around, you know, if you are seeing someone, because because kids don't stumble onto guns all of a sudden. It is part of a culture that they are being exposed to. So how do we work with those babies while they are still babies to see something and say something around gun violence, to disincentivize guns being an option to create stability, to create safety? I think quite frankly, the underlying reason in my humble opinion, that most folks, most children end up with weapons is because they are trying to meet an economic need at the other side, and they don't see another pathway. Um, and then, you know, making sure that they feel like there are opportunities for their development in and outside of school hours and um, in their economic futures for the stability of their communities through apprenticeship programs and um, expansion of after school programs. That was a really hard one.
Well, hey, well, you got it under two minutes. So kudos. Thank you, Brianna. Sarah, this this question is uh, for you. It comes from Sue. Sue asked, as a member of Ci- as a member of Seattle City Council, how would you approach a new contract with Seattle Police? And what is your view on the funding SPD?
Have to make sure I'm unmuted first. Okay, good. So we were fortunate enough to have uh, to have Chief Carmen Best uh, assume the um, the top of SPD and that that was because of community advancing her nomination when she wasn't on the on the shortlist. And then you know, she she did a great job. And then council's call to defund the police drove her out of town. I'll I'll address that separately. So so when we're talking about a new police chief, let's do more in more formally what uh, what should have happened last time, which was find community input and and see what um, there probably will be not be a um, a it'll be a national search, but engage community early in the selection process for the shortlist and then make sure that that person has a track record of organizational change, that they have a history of having improved whatever police department they were working for before. That is what we need, and we need someone who is committed to complying with the terms of the consent decree so that we can so we can get to the bare minimum of constitutional policing. So so that is what we need in the new police chief. And as I alluded, uh, I do not agree with um, picking a number out of the air and defunding the police because council members take an oath of office to um, to provide public safety. That is one of our charter services. And if we're not meeting our responsibilities to keep everyone safe while ensuring, because we do need police reform, while ensuring that our officers are um, are held accountable for misconduct. And also, but and but they at the same time treating people with respect, then we are not doing our job as public servants. So we should be leading with public safety first and funding accordingly.
Thank you, Sarah. Nikita, uh, this question is from you for this question is for you. It comes from Jennifer. Jennifer asked, what services and supports would you support or create to help families traumatized by gun violence?
Thank you. So I want to acknowledge that the defund numbers were not just picked out of the air. The Seattle Police Department's budget has grown by fifty percent since two thousand and ten when John T. Williams was murdered. We've seen the twenty seventeen police accountability legislation voted on unanimously, then not put in place because it was thwarted by the collective bargaining agreement. We saw thousands of people gassed and attacked by the Seattle Police Department. So that number is actually reflective of the way in which that budget has continued to grow, but has not actually delivered on its promise of public safety. So as an advocate for defunding and also an advocate, a strong advocate for the anti violence movement, believing that intervention and prevention uh, are actually our best tools for a public health strategy of ending the epidemic of gun violence, uh, we need to invest in our community based infrastructure. When we think specifically about survivor centered practices, these are practices that acknowledge
these are practices that acknowledge the unique needs of every survivor and ensures that those services are tailored to meet their needs. And survivor-led services strive to incorporate the voice of survivors in our development and implementation of that programming specifically for their needs. So I think, you know, Sarah had mentioned earlier that electeds need to go meet with families impacted by gun violence. I have been to more funerals than I can count and sat with more families than I can count and been to the hospital with young people. And so as an elected, I will have already been doing that. What I have heard is the need for mental health supports, the need for cash assistance, the need for housing relocation opportunities when it gets too hot in the neighborhood that we're in, providing support to groups like Community Passageways Deep Dive, which also acknowledges that young people who commit acts of gun violence are also the same folks that are often impacted by gun violence that happened before. And the reason they they end up perpetuating that is because we fail to respond to the mental health, physical health, and economic needs of that community to stop it.
All right, well, thank you all for that round. We are, for the sake of time, we're going to have to move to our closing statements now. Just a reminder, though, to everybody who is watching, that ballots should be in your mailbox by July 16. And so I hope that this has been in an informative form for all of you in making a decision on which two candidates you would like to move forward on from the primary to the general election. Now, we are going to give each candidate two minutes to share their closing thoughts. And we want them to please include the following. We've heard a fair amount of agreement today and some disagreement, obviously. And so we want to make sure that voters come away from this discussion with some specifics. So I'd like each of you to tell us in detail how your approach differs from your opponents and as well as whatever else you would like to say in the two minutes you have for your closing statements. So earlier, we kicked it off by going alphabetical by last name. So this time, we are going to go alphabetically by first name. That means, Brianna, you are up.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you all for being here over lunch, looking at Zoom, and it's a perfectly pleasant day outside. And thank you for your very thoughtful, very well-researched questions for all of us, very clearly customized. I'll start with governance approach. I've been working inside or around government for 11 years. It is my life's calling. I am a public servant. And I think the last few years, we have seen our public rhetoric be very divided and sometimes divisive. You're with us or you're against us. You're for us or you're not. And I don't think that's how government should actually work. In a democracy, there are a plethora of ideas. And I think in Seattle in particular, we've got a pretty good, solid baseline of values that we all share. But the devil's in the details, and those details don't get done unless you can get a phone call back from your colleagues, unless you're able to meaningfully collaborate with people that you disagree with. And I have been practicing that particular art form for the last 11 years, which is why I've got the endorsements that I've been able to get and why I've had to wear with all to continue to have these conversations that are so important. Because I really do want to be a bridge builder. I really do believe that I'm running to govern, not just to win. And I think that that's what we should all remember about public service. Couple of things I'd like to leave you with today. I do have a stellar record of policies that have passed and stood up to legal muster. I've got endorsements from all over the region, which I think is going to be necessary for tackling gun violence because that's not respecting municipal boundaries. And I can attest to the fact that, you know, our built environment contributes to a culture of violence, our past failed policies that need reviewing and advocacy contribute to gun violence. And I would say that I don't think it's accurate to say the city council has been absent in these spaces because many of the things that were included in the training were investments made by the council in the last five, six years to address these issues head-on. And I want to continue to be able to do that good work with you.
Thank you. All right, Nikita, you are up next.
Yeah, so I want to start first by thanking you for your time and also by reading some numbers to you. In 2020, the Seattle Police Department's budget was $407 million, and it exceeded the city's entire combined spending on affordable housing, health and human services, affordable childcare, libraries, the arts, parks, zoos, and aquariums. $271.1 million was specifically on affordable housing, health and human services, and affordable childcare. That's only half of the 407, a little over half of 407 million we spent on policing. If police and prisons actually worked to keep communities safe, the United States would be the safest country in the entire world. And that should tell us that our continued bloated budgets for those particular responses of public safety is actually failing. Many of the things that we've seen the city council do to invest in solutions that I do believe will address the underlying safety issues have only happened because communities advocated for it. The $4 million that were invested in public safety hubs this year to help fund groups like Community Passageways was advocated by community members like myself in the rebalancing budget that happened during 2020. I have been on the front lines of this work for a number of years. And as we've seen, the council moved towards restorative justice, moved towards meeting basic needs. It is actually organizers like myself who have been advocating for that from the outside. And I do believe that it's time that we have voices that have this frontline experience, who have the lived and professional experience around it in our council chambers, amplifying the voices of survivors, amplifying the voices of communities impacted by disenfranchisement and a lack of access to resources. I have endorsements from King County Minister Girmayzah Girmayzah Hui, state reps and state senators, as well as three sitting Seattle City Council members, which says to me that we will be able to develop a regional approach and have consensus on the Seattle City Council to invest in meeting basic needs and addressing gun violence at its root.
Thank you for that, Nikita. Sarah, you are up next to close this out.
All right, well, now would be a good time to mention that I am a survivor of gun violence. My stepfather shot my boyfriend in the heat of an argument. I did not know that there was a gun in the house. And, you know, I was the target, but my boyfriend stepped in and took the bullet for me, almost died. So I mentioned this as a white, middle-class person because I do want to make the point that gun violence is an American problem. And it does cut across class and race and age and gender lines. However, we actually do have a house on fire when it comes to spikes of gun violence in the black community. And so to take a different analogy, when your house is burning, do you ask why? Do you ask, do you call the electrician because maybe there was some wiring that was wrong, and that was the root cause? No, you call 911, and the fire department comes out and puts out your house. And so the the point that I would make about what makes me different is that I appreciate root causes, and I am really focused on on specific policy solutions to very immediate problems. I list them on my website, not just for gun violence, but for the environment and economic recovery, my top priority. When it comes to that, we have got to do more, invest. We can't end poverty, but we can direct funding to prevent displacement in the black community and provide economics, some flexibility, and some some reasons why not to engage in some of the things that are going on right now. But my point is that I am endorsed by the Seattle Times, might have seen that last week, the Seattle Firefighters, the Building and Construction Trades Council, the ironworkers, the plumbers, and the pipe fitters. As the business owner, admittedly, they're endorsing me because we all want a strong economy, good jobs, and a livable, safe city. And I know how to get there. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Nikita. Thank you, Brianna. And I just want to acknowledge how hard it is to run for office. Somebody said it's harder to run for office than it is an ultra marathon. And I very much appreciate all of you and thank all of you for seeking public service for the city. Good luck to you all, and thank you for your time today. With all that being said, we are going to wrap up today, and then that pretty much does do it for us. But I do want to give a reminder to everybody watching that ballots will drop this Friday, July 16. So please do vote. And a special shout out to the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, Grandmothers Against Gun Violence, and to the South Seattle Emerald, who was a media sponsor for today. With that, thank you all for your time and enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.